We stand to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to deduct the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to deduct the agenda as presented.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Item three is the LJ Hart presentation. We have Connor and Neil to give some information about the bond.
Thanks for having us again. My name is Neil Brandon with LJ Hart. Passing out all the information is Connor Brickler. He is a senior financial analyst with us. Normally Courtney Wegman for our office has covered all the board meetings. She is enjoying spring break with her family, so she couldn't be here, so we're covering tonight. I'll wait until Connor gets the packets out to everybody so we can reference it. Basically, you know, back in last year, we approved the $21 million of bonds. The voters approved about 68%. We did that first 13 million back in September. We went out with marketing for the remaining $8 million portion. That is what we're here tonight for approval for. We have investors lined up. We did send those to local financial institutions. Home Bank, People Savings Bank, and First State Community Bank have agreed to purchase 2.5 million of the eight total. The rest of them are already spoken for as well, pending the board's approval. So with that, on page one there, Schedule five, that is the proposed payment structure for the 8 million or for the remaining $8 million. It coincides with the 13 million that was done last year. Principal starts on that in 2035 going out to 2039, making this one just a 14-year maturity. The interest rate is 5%. That's under that coupon column. And then on the far right-hand side, you have your fiscal year total payments. That's what you'd be making each year. So interest only until 2035, and then this one would be done within 2039. Under six line down, under yield statistics, bond yield for arbitrage purposes, that is your effective interest rate. When you take into account the premium, that's at 3.67% of an effective rate. I guess I do need to point out, and I like to point it out on the next page, the pricing summary for this. Obviously, we sold it in premium like we did the 13 million. That 5% interest rate with yields ranging from 3.54% out to 3.77%, which gets you the reoffering premium. Second line under bid information there, $476,118 more in funding. Back when Courtney was here, last August, we were looking at that being about 100, sorry, 108,000 less. Okay, so we were able to get about 108,000 more with this marketing that we went out with just last week. So when it's all said and done, what's going into the account for the rest of the construction is on the next page. Schedule five B, sourcing uses of funds. Under your sources of funds, you have your proceeds of the 8 million, the reoffering premium of 476,118. Then under your uses of funds, you have your cost of issuance that are broken out there totaling 103,200. Again, those are one-time fees outside of that reoccurring fee for registered paying agent bank. It's 400 initial setup, 300 every year after that. Then what is going into the construction account, 8,372,918. That is total with the last financing and this financing, 21,772,798.
Can you repeat that number?
Yes, okay.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, how that fits into your overall cash flow for debt services on the legal-sized sheet of paper, the spreadsheet five. So working left to right here, you have your assessed valuation by each fiscal year. We're growing that at 1.5%. Your light green shaded columns are all of your revenues. Your revenue from your 86.91 cent debt service fund levy, that generates just over $2 million a year. Then you have your state assessed revenue and utilities, just over 450,000 there. Other sources of revenue, and then interest earned on those debt service fund balances. Right now, we're assuming that to be 1%, but likely it's a little higher than that, so we're trying to be conservative there. That is totaled up in the dark green shaded column. And then all of the light red or pink shaded columns are all of the payments that you have on your bond issue. So with that 13 million, you can see all of that was done on the longer end, so we did a 20-year financing out of that. And then this is kind of making up that middle portion, again, from 35 to 39. And then the balances versus the payments is actually enlarged on the next page, a little easier to see. You have your total revenue on that far left-hand side, again, bringing in anywhere from 2.5 million, and then it grows, obviously, with the assessed valuation growth. You have your balance in the debt service account, that is as of June 30, after all of your payments are made for that year. And on the far right-hand side, your total fiscal year payments. So right now, for the next couple of years, your balances track slightly below your payments, which is a good thing for the state auditor. And then, again, trying to build back some bonding capacity, pay off some bonds, and then you're all able, hopefully able to do a no-tax rate increase bond issue as soon as probably 2029, 2030. Any questions on the numbers? Alright, I'm gonna kick it over to Connor to go through the resolution.
So the resolution, it's the next item in the packet. Very similar to what was approved last year in August. The only difference is, last time, we didn't have investors committed at the time we attended the meeting. This time we do, so the key difference is, we actually have the final rates in this document with board approval. We'll lock in those interest rates and set up the closing to occur next Friday on the 28th, which is when the money would be wired into your construction account. I do just want to point out one section in here in particular on page, I believe it is 11. Page 11, section 3.1, optional redemption. So just like the bonds we did last year, these will have a five-year call feature. So beginning March 1, 2030, you could begin to make prepayments or refinance if we can get lower interest rates on the entire issue. So at that time, you could see some interest savings at that point. That'll allow you to create more flexibility for the future for more projects down the line. So any questions on this document here? There's a lot of information in there. Like I said, it's very similar to what was approved last year.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, it's in line with how most school facility updates and upgrades are done. School bonds are about the only way you can do major improvements on our campuses. Kind of prohibited from just banking out money to favor things outright.
There's no questions? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the sale and issuance of the Series 2025 General Obligation Bonds to LJ Hart and Company.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate your work. Katie, do we have anybody for public comment? Onto number five, president's comments. The board would like to announce the March Employees of the Month, which is sponsored by Show Me Credit Union. Our first person is certified staff Sydney Groves, who is the high school speech, debate, and theater teacher. Her nominating colleague shared, Sydney is an amazing teacher. She does, she has done so much good with her students, all the students love her. She treats all students equally and does so much with them, if not theater, it's speech and drama. Sydney gives all students an opportunity to show their talent. She works with them and is awesome at what she does. I am grateful for her and glad she is, and glad she is her.
Here.
Is here. With the staff and all the students. So we congratulate Sydney. The support staff employee of the month is Sam Hamilton, who is the middle school administrative assistant. Her nominating colleague shared, Ms. Sam goes above and beyond for MMS. Not only is she a wonderful attendance secretary, but she has been helping fill in as nurse, and she is doing really great. Even when things get a bit chaotic, Ms. Sam is ready to help with a smile on her face. The middle school is blessed to have her, she is the glue that holds us together. We congratulate Sam on her nomination and winning a employee of the month. Alright, consent agenda. Do I have any questions for any of the, about any of the items on the consent agenda? On the treasurer's report, I did ask Dr. Lentz, what was it, SHI International Corp., and that was about the Chromebooks. That was at an expense of 20, 2,085,000, yeah. So I had asked about that. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Item number seven, approval of bills that require extension.
Let me go ahead and do it. I'll make a motion to approve payments ACH 012251 for mom and skating and cooling for $9,390.89, and check number 142030 to the YMCA for $4,812.56.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five zero two. Do I have a motion for number two?
On number two, I will make a motion to approve check number 141967, the city of Mexico. One, oh, I'm sorry, $1,247.57. Check number 141984 to the city of Mexico for $7,361.47. ACH 012233 to Central Bank for $30,127.68, and check number 142056 to Partners for Rural Impact for $63,958.8.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries two, or five zero two. Onto number eight, reports and presentations. We have the superintendent's report, Dr. Lentz.
Yeah. February 28th, we were well represented at the Chamber of Commerce Awards banquet. Stephen Robinett was the educator of the year. Ted Daubens was the president's award, so two people that are really important in our school community. And we had a big crowd of school people there to support them. Facility is about a, it'd be a good time to, you know, try to create a dashboard here. Katie's helped me with a dashboard that is much better than this, that I look forward to presenting. But I will give her the credit for it in the months to come. Yeah, we've got about half of our bids out if we, you know, if the bids that are presented tonight are approved. And so if they were to be approved tonight, we'd be at about $9.4 million of the original budgets, or about on track. I do want to call out on the softball field, Vernon Jones, because there's a change order to consider tonight. When those bids came back in, some bidders included an allowance for if the soil needed remediation, and some didn't. And the way FSG handled that was, they just presented the bids if there were no allowances in it. So Vernon Jones originally had an allowance, and it was more than, more than what they got the bid for. But it was just that, just in case we get to working on the soil and it doesn't seem like it can hold up to putting the turf in. So there was some question from multiple bidders about what they would find when they started down the soil. And so as we talked through that change order later, that change order isn't included in here, but it's not completely unexpected. I did have a question about how, did we encounter the same scenario when the football field was turfed and when the baseball field was turfed and the soccer field? And the answer to that question is no, because in all those fields, they dug out like a foot of topsoil and they went in with a gravel base and made like a roadbed gravel and chat before they built up. So that's not what the proposal is for the softball field, which, you know, is less excavating, less hauling material in. So rather than building up a gravel bed to put a field on, the proposal is they, they go in with a spreader. They spread cement, you know, in the powdered form, then they till it in at 12 inches deep, and then they drive over it with a water truck to, you know, it almost turns it into clay or more of a concrete. And that's what allows them to bring the heavy machinery in and pull the turf tight without leaving ruts and without having, you know, undulations after they install it. So if we weren't to do, if we, I think the right call is to follow their expertise and the recommendation, to shore up the soil. Because I think that's the only way they're going to warranty it will work, and there's pretty chance it will fail. So I'm hoping we get through the process without a lot of change orders. This one is presented as a change order, but if we had taken a different path, and I was looking through emails today where I said, no, I want to present it just as you have it, because he said the other option would be to present it as, you know, about $50,000 more with an allowance built in, and that probably wouldn't have required board action, it would have been within the bid. So I don't know if that's more or less than you want to know, but.
Is this a common way to fix this issue?
Yeah, and I actually, I think that's how a lot of places, when they put in roads, they, I watched some YouTube videos today on soil remediation. I didn't see any on.
I see you're an expert now.
Yeah, I'm an expert. I watched, you know, I watched 30 seconds of one YouTube video. But I didn't see any on building football fields. I saw them on, you know, how do you remediate soil when you're trying to put in a road, especially with the, with the soil that we have here in Otteron County, which is great for growing soybeans, but not always great for putting in basements or puddings for your crawl space. The short version is, we're on track to stay within the budget. You see the original budget of 20 million. We, so far, we've coded $1.1 million. We're actually, I've never had this problem in my personal life, but we're trying to monitor how much money we're earning on interest right now so we don't have arbitrage, so we're trying to make sure we pay invoices in a timely manner when they come in. And then with the premium, you know, if you follow the premium conversation earlier, we're gonna end up with about $1 million more in premium offerings if you combine what was sold in the fall and what's sold now. But we still have a lot of projects up to bid, and, you know, there could be snags. I think the high school bid package is gonna be pretty significant because it will include elevators. But so far, FSG, pretty much all their, all the bids have come in under what they had projected.
So their recommendation is to do that cement versus?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, there's two, there's only about $9,000 difference between the two options. And I told Ryan that I would probably recommend the cheaper option, and said that they, they'll stand behind that. They wouldn't have presented it as an option. It's like, I think, 4% cement versus, yeah, so. And I'm sure it's just related to the expensive of the materials, so. So we have two paths there. We've got the actual construction and the work, and then the finance side, and I'll try to update as I go. If you've been over to the softball field, you'll see, you know, they've made progress. They have the whole field tour up. If you've picked up a child at the middle school, you'll see that we've got pieces and parts laying out in the yard. And I promise you that they'll go away soon. But those are the curbs for the air conditioners that'll be on the rooftop of the middle school. And next week, weather permitting, there's gonna be some activity at Eugene Field and at the high school, both roofing and HVAC. And, you know, those, the roofers and the air conditioning people have to kind of do a little dance around each other. And FSG provides project management to make sure that those contractors are talking to each other. And then the big bid tonight is the, for the, and this became one bid package. It's the middle school addition. So there's four classrooms going on the east side of the middle school, the kitchen being gutted. And in the same package, they put in the concession stand that'll sit on the north end of the soccer field, which will include a restroom. We've had complaints at the soccer field, people have to use the restroom. It's really, especially for, you know, more experienced soccer fans, it's a long walk to get to the restroom from there. So we'll have the concession stand at the soccer field. The fence around Eugene Field, which is definitely a needed improvement. So that all went in in one bid package, so it's definitely the heaviest bid award so far. Questions on, I feel like we'll be talking about some of it again later when we take action on things. So our finances, I'm probably always gonna split up, you know, the capital improvement budget and our debt service budget. I kind of am able to separate that in my mind from our operation budget. So our, the operation side is, you know, how we're paying our salaries and keeping the lights on and making sure we don't run out of paper clips and stuff like that. We have received 75% of the budgeted operating revenues or operating expenditures so far, or 60%, 62%. At one point in the year, early in the year, I was hoping that our revenues would be higher than the budget projected, but Stephanie's budget projections are, I think, are gonna prove to be pretty solid. So I think we will end up with a deficit budget as planned, you know, part of our strategic goal, to spend down the reserve that we have right now. We are at 75% of the fiscal year as of this meeting, so the fiscal year will be gone before we know it. And then along with that, the salary schedule's approved tonight, the insurance renewal's approved tonight. Those are the biggest rocks in our 25-26 budget, so we'll keep working on 25-26 budget as we go. A lot of that we won't know until after the state legislature adjourns in May. But again, the plan is to continue to have a deficit budget, but have a plan to be able to get on the exit ramp so we're not continuing to deficit spend and put the district at risk. Winter weather, I've got some information here. The short version is, I won't read through it unless you have questions, but we don't have any makeup days. After you get to 30 hours that you've missed, you only make up every other hour from the state. And that's by state statute passed in 2019, so it's, you know, we all encounter people that know they went to school on Saturday or remember when school went all the way until June, and those stories are true. They're probably all from before 2019, when the state legislature changed the statute. A lot of that is in response to four-day school weeks and moving things to, running the whole calculation off of hours, not days, so.
Even with the snow tonight, we're good for.
Yeah, it's not an announcement, kids. Snow continues to be in the forecast, and I need it, and I want that in the record. Well, I got everybody talking. I'm not a weatherman.
Matt is.
Thanks, Matt. And I think definitely, I'm gonna pass it over to you.
Well, that would be fun to follow. Thanks. Alright, I'm gonna update you guys on the work we've been doing throughout the year for elementary curriculum instruction. You hear me talk about the math review team every month, and it is just, it's an ongoing project, so we do quite a bit on that each month. I have an amazing team of educators that are participating on this team, they've done a lot of work. We have gone to two more site visits this past month, debriefing, processing with their teachers and their instructional coaches and their curriculum coordinators, and working with the vendor representatives, and just getting as much information as we can. This week and then the week following spring break, our teachers are piloting one of the vendors. We've narrowed it down to two now, and then right after that, then they will pilot the other vendor. There's a, there's a lot of pressure to pick just the right curriculum resource when you're building those foundational skills with your elementary kids and feeding them up to the middle school and high school. So we're putting a lot of time and effort into this, and just really proud of the people that have been on the journey with me. Reading success plans, again, just an update, continuing work on those. We have some reading coaches that have been working together with our instructional coach and me, and just looking through all of our students' reading success plans that are required by the state for all students who are below grade level in reading, just to make sure that we are addressing, analyzing what their deficit is and addressing those needs with intervention. For literacy improvement, we, again, we have another team for that. They've put in a lot of time and effort. We are in the midst of ordering 95 core phonics for the 26-27 school year for kindergarten at Milk. So we're very excited to get the whole elementary from kindergarten through fifth grade on the same program. That will help with the cognitive load of the kids, trying to remember, are we stretching, are we tapping, are we, what are we doing? And so hopefully that will improve learning outcomes as well. We are switching with that to the platform online so that all teachers and title teachers will be on the same platform that can help with data analysis and, again, identifying those needs for our students. We are also transitioning our first and second grade students in summer school to what's called a rising first grade and rising second grade curriculum, which is part of the 95% group program. And we are also gonna be looking at writing curriculum throughout the year next year. So similar to what you've heard me talk about with math curriculum updates all year this year, we'll be going through that with writing next year, just trying to build those foundational skills as we feed kids into the upper grade levels. We are starting that work this summer. We've planned a book study called the Writing Revolution. Several of our teachers went to a training about writing and how it matches with literacy skills. So we are excited to get started working on that. Our title teachers participated in a two-day dyslexia training this month, and they, they made a presentation to deliver to the rest of their colleagues. So all elementary teachers have received that training and just shared the big nuggets with them so that they can improve their work with any kindergarten through fifth grade kid who are flagged as possibly having characteristics of dyslexia. And I've had the pleasure of observing several teachers this past month administering or facilitating lessons for their phonics word study, and it has been really fun. The teachers and the kids have looked like they've been engaged and enjoying the program, and I can see progress. We're back to spelling tests, people, it's been great to see. Looking at secondary curriculum instruction, we've had a few teachers at middle school for ELA and math, which are tested subjects for the MAP test, work on Missouri instructional testlets. And that is a test, it's a MAP test-like test that assesses their skills in, over the standards, and then shoots back the scores to the teachers so they can see what the deficits are during those before the students take the MAP test. And then at the high school, Ms. Ella Brock has been working closely with a program called Mastery Connect, which is very similar to the Missouri instructional testlets. It's great practice for the EOCs, and it will help the teachers analyze the data more closely, identifying the deficits in the standards, knowing what they need to teach more. We go on a monthly culture walk, as I've told you several times. This past month, we went to Hawthorne. We had several administrators come and walk through the Hawthorne building. We stopped by the title room, we stopped by PE. We stopped by the title room. We stopped by PE and a first grade classroom. And then stopped and debriefed and said what we noticed as far as the culture at Hawthorne. Pretty friendly place to be. Panorama is up and running. Appreciate the support from the board in approving that. The administrators, the counseling team, all of the interventionists and instructional coaches have been working in this program. We're rolling it out to teachers as we go, as they need the training, have time to get the training so that they know what it is. Basically, as I've told you before, it's a way to look at a data dashboard for a student and have their information in discipline and attendance and academics. And notice who needs interventions in those areas. And then you can have the interventions listed there and everybody is on the same page about them. Uh, district assessment out of our office, we've been working on the precodes for Moses for those to be loaded from DSE into our testing platform called the DRC. And that has been completed. We are waiting for DSE to then load students in the DRC and test, the site test administrators can then start working on accommodations and get gear up for the MAP test. All the building administrators have turned in their MAP test schedule and our title teachers and we have some administrators joining me this week to work on the iReady test schedule to coordinate with the MAP schedule. That's a lot. Any questions?
Julie, how long or how often will you assess curriculum? Like I know this has been a big, reading, math, we can't, writing. How often do you think you'll do it? Do you think we stay, stick with this for a couple of years?
Yeah, no, it needs to be on a cycle. Um, it needs to be readdressed every few years. There hasn't been, historically, there hasn't been this attention given to the elementary curriculum. We've stuck with foundations for about ten years. We've been with everyday math for twelve, yeah. Katie says four. So, you know, you gotta look at your, your data from your assessments and see how your kids are doing. You gotta survey your teachers and see how the curriculum is working for them. Do they think it's kid-friendly? Is it user-friendly for them? We have teachers who are non-traditionally trained and they need to have user-friendly curriculum to deliver to the students, especially at the elementary level when teachers have ten preps a day. You know, they have a lot to plan for. So my vision has been that we will be on a three-year cycle and just look at reading, writing, math. We, we started with reading. We're going, we, we're working on math and then we will do writing. And we will continue to assess those every year after that.
On that ninety-five percent reading that you're doing, is there any way for outside people, you know, like tutors to assess that? You know, other spell can be accessible, you know, online, but since it's so new, there's nothing out there?
Well, that's a great question. I'll be glad to check into it. I know our tutors at the school who stay after school for after-school tutoring, do, they continue the lessons after school and our title teachers work on it for their tutoring as well.
This is an outside tutor, so.
That's something I'll check into, Lynette. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we'll move on to building reports. Does anybody have any questions on the building reports? Anything you wanna talk about with building reports?
No.
I just kinda wanted to give a shout out to the principals and the administrators who put that together. We do read them. I think there's some great things going on in each of the schools and we appreciate all you do with that. Communications report. Mercy, you wanna comment?
Just information for review.
Anybody have questions on that? Moving on to new business. The approval of the bus bid. Is there anything you wanna talk about with that or any questions?
I'll just call out that, you know, well, if you all approve the bid and we place the order, we won't receive this bus until well into next year. So this, this is an approval for next year's budget. This won't land on this year's PSBR, so I don't wanna draw attention to that. But I think it's important to have a, a maintenance cycle for items. Then I think it's also important to have a replacement cycle for items. The state only allows depreciation on buses for eight years. So I think if we don't have a, a planned replacement cycle, it doesn't make financial sense. And then also, you can easily end up with a whole fleet of buses that are in the shop all the time. So.
So does the Midwest class for not come with cameras? Cause in the bid, it says that the first one does, but it doesn't say anything for the second.
Yeah. Jennifer, do you wanna talk about the numbers?
It will have cameras in it.
It will.
Yes, it will.
Well, I just said it on one and then on the other.
Is that because of how they presented the bid?
Uh, I, I should show that in there. I order all the buses that have, they all have cameras from Angel Trax.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the bus bid?
Make a motion to approve the bid award to Midwest Transit.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of the middle school renovation tennis court field building, Eugene Field. Fence thing bid. Any questions? Anybody have questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid award in contact to Little Dixie Construction for the renovations at the middle school, field building at the high school's fourth complex and a new fence at Eugene Field Elementary.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven. Are you a one? Are you a, no, sorry. Carry six, one. All right. Approval for the softball change order. Anybody have any questions? Anything you wanted to talk about it? Any questions on that?
Please answer my question on the report.
Do I have a motion to approve the change order?
Make a motion to approve the change order from Brandon Jones Construction to stabilize soil at the softball field at Bull, which is deep using four percent cement, option two.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Any questions about the playground equipment at McMillan?
What is, what exactly are we doing over at McMillan, that playground, the new one?
No. Yeah, thanks for asking that. Um, so the, if you're, if you're dropping off your little biddies, you can see this really nice playground. And if you go behind the building in that, or behind in that courtyard area where the other playground areas, there's another playground for the kindergartners. That playground was built for older kids. The monkey bars are at the height you would probably have a fifth grader on. We don't want our kindergartners. Bars that height, so the, the solution, uh, the way that was mediated was we have cardboard, or not cardboard, plywood pieces that are zip-tied to keep the kids out of those sections where it's too tall for them. And so we remove all that old playground equipment, put in new playground equipment. The other piece that we're moving towards is getting rid of all the pea gravel. So everything's gonna have a nice port-in-place rubber, uh, surface underneath it like you see on the, on the playground for the little, little kids. And had a good meeting with the architects, had a good meeting with one of the teacher leaders at McMillan. The answer's always known unless you ask, cause the teacher asked if we'd get some shade structure, a couple of other additions. But so that we're, we're at a place where the teachers, uh, at least the teacher leaders that were in the meeting with the architects and architects feel like this serves us well. Was in the language of the, the valid issue and it stays within the budget. But yeah, it's not, not the, not that nice one. I think if we had, if that other playground was out where the public could see it all the time, I think we probably have questions about why we apply wood boards zip-tied to the playground equipment. Cause it doesn't, it's not a good look. And I'll be happy to see him going.
I bet those questions will be answered. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the playground equipment at McMillan?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Brandon Jones for playground equipment at McMillan Early Learning Center, incorporating the recommendation from Facility Solutions Group.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of the Eugene Field Playground Surface Contract. Any questions on that?
This is, it includes pea gravel, but we're trying to get away.
Yeah, it's the pea gravel, uh, removal.
So do we need to approve the higher amount to get away from? It includes pea gravel.
Yeah, I would make, if that's the, if the intention, I would, uh, make the, have the motion include the three hundred fifty-two.
And I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Brandon Jones for playground resurfacing at Eugene Field, incorporating the recommendations from FSG for the amount of three hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred eighteen to include where.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Onto approval of the Hawthorne Playground Surfacing Contract. Any questions? Anything you wanna say?
No, it's the same thing. The, the goal is to get rid of all the pea gravel. It's difficult. Our liability insurer has, you know, specifications on how much depth of cushion you have. And if you're using pea gravel, it's impossible to maintain it at that depth. And also the kids carry the pea gravel on their shoes and so this makes it a little more modern, a little more fresh and, and, uh, it'll be at the correct depth for the rest of my career.
Any questions? Make a motion?
Make a motion for the proposal for Brandon Jones for playground servicing at Hawthorne Elementary, incorporating the recommendations from FSG with the approved amount with four in place and where that allows two hundred fifty thousand, one cent.
Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Onto approval of the MOU with Zenith Aircraft. Any questions?
Oh, I'm pretty excited about this. And, um, and this is funded by the Pem Grant. We, we wouldn't have the Pem Grant without CTC and PRI and hope. There's been conversations, community around, around the organization, but this is pretty clear that it's something that helps our kids. The Pem Grant, uh, like a lot of federally funded programs, you know, there's, there was like a period where we were on pause or at least questioning whether it was gonna continue. But we have the green light to move forward. And I don't know of any other school districts in the state that can say that they have kids on paid internships in aircraft manufacturing. So this would allow us to support two, uh, interns for the summer at Zenith. And, uh, to me, it's, I'm pretty excited about this. So it would function the same as what we're doing with the YMCA.
What qualification for this? I mean, do they have to meet certain requirements? Do they just apply and then they?
Yeah.
Hire or do they have to have a certain career path in mind that is gonna take them on that?
The way we've approached it and talked with Zenith is, the phrase that it's, that it's used in the, the grant language is it's job, job-based learning experiences. So this, they need to meet Zenith's needs. So, and it's supposed to be a job. And if they don't meet the expectations, they're gonna get some real-world experiences and probably have to go look elsewhere for a job. So it's, it's mostly at the, at the Zenith. We just want them to be high school students in Mexico. So. And I'm thankful that they're willing to, to work with us. And Sebastian was, he's pretty excited about this too. So he's, just like everybody else, everybody's trying to grow their own and, and trying to develop talent in Mexico. And I, I think we could see kids, if they meet his expectations, I think they could end up with a full-time job at Zenith, which is a pretty cool place.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the random of understanding with Zenith Aircraft Company.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of a, of temporary, temporary construction easements to the city of Mexico. Any questions?
There's, we're gonna have improved curbs and gutters and they, they think they can get through this without trapping everybody in Hawthorne Elementary. So.
Make a motion to grant two temporary construction easements at Hawthorne Elementary and Mrs. High School District in Mexico.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six, one. Six, the zero, one. Um, discussion of the student-teacher protocol. Too much talk about this.
Yeah, and this is, I should tag Amber if she wants to, cause she can fill in the blanks, but she's the one that came up with this.
Okay. Amber, why don't you talk about it?
Um, so across the state, several of us are meeting, just talking about different recruitment and retention options. Um, as we know, everybody in the state is having, everybody in the nation is having trouble hiring teachers. One of those things that Columbia has started and I think will trickle down into the smaller districts around Columbia is paying their student teachers. So this year, I think we have three student teachers and next year, I know we're having at least two. Um, and we would like to look at some colleges and partnering with them to get more of those people to come to our school district. And one of those ways we'd like to do that is to give them a two thousand dollar stipend. And so they would do their student teaching with us that year. And then if they come back and teach for us next, then the following year after they were receiving their degree, they would get to start on step two instead of being on step one. So that would be an incentive to come back to our district after doing our student teaching.
Anything there?
No, I'm pretty tired of this too. I wanna give people a reason to choose Mexico.
Any questions?
So they, that two thousand dollar, two thousand dollar stipend is just bypassing that first step? And then we get that basically their second year, they student taught first and then.
No, they would get two thousand for student teaching here. So while they're student teaching, we would give them that two thousand dollar stipend likely after they completed their, their student teaching with us. And then if they came back and signed a contract with us, once they complete their degree the next year, then they would not have to start on step one, cause we would consider that student teaching as their step one. And they would get to start on step two.
They're doing it incentivized.
Yeah.
If they were to go to another district, they would start on step one. So they get to skip that step and stay in here.
How does student teacher work? Is that something that we, after they complete that, that first year, is that a recommendation? Like I recommend this person to continue or?
Uh, so every student teacher has a mentor teacher that's guiding them through the year. And they also have a professor back at the college who comes and checks in on them and works with their mentor teacher here in the district. And that, that mentor teacher is not, say, giving them a grade, but they are feeding information to the professor that will give them a grade. So it's a course and they get a grade for it.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion or no motion? We just discussed.
I mean, you can make a motion if you'd like.
If not, we'll know next month.
Yeah. We could push it back there.
Make a motion to approve the student-teacher protocol at present.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Amber. Discussion of full-time preschool for all district staff.
Yeah, this is, uh, something that Ms. Brown asked us to discuss and I think it's important. You know, we're talking about ways to recruit and retain teachers. And that's something that, that people struggle with is childcare. And right now, if you work at MELP, you can keep your kids at MELP full day. There's some caveats that are in, cause we have, our, our current situation with preschool is a half-day program. So you can be in the AM session or the PM session and then there's a break in between. And so, uh, that's the, the challenge that we'd have to try to overcome. I don't know if we have a solution to that yet, but I think it's worth talking about. Because if you're, if you're. Because if you're at MELT, your kid can be there all day, but it's kind of on you a little bit to figure out how to supervise that child. So if we're looking for ways to expand that to all teachers, I mean, I think it's obvious to see the advantages, I think the challenges, and the reason why it's not offered at this time is we don't have a good solution right now for what to do in the middle period. And then also trying to know for a fact how many slots that would be, you know, because that's going to shift, and it would likely take spots away from community members. So if you're there for the whole day, that'd be an afternoon slot that we couldn't open up to a community member, so. Dr. Billington and I have been talking about, you know, the pros and the cons of how many people we think it would be, but we don't have a good solution for the middle period yet, and we're going to keep looking at it, because there's a lot of value in it.
Are we currently turning anyone down for preschool admissions?
Dr. Billington, are there other people, do we have a waitlist, are there people waiting to get into preschool that aren't on?
There are a few in the morning session.
In the morning session, okay.
Not very many.
But do they have the option to do the afternoon, and like it's a parent preference thing that works for them? Okay, so, okay, that's.
Is that like work schedule thing?
Yeah.
Is that for-year-olds or three-year-olds?
We don't have three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and young fathers.
I don't know if it was more, more three-year-olds that were being pushed, not pushed off.
Oh, on the waiting list?
Yes.
Yes, sir, yes. Thank you.
That's got to be something to look at too, just for teacher retention, you know, trying to get a teacher here, young families here, you know, and they have kids and, you know, I saw the struggle, I'm part of that struggle going too, but I saw the struggle where somebody has to cover a classroom for the teacher to go over and get their kid. And I just think it needs to be something that maybe we can do to help.
Dr. Billington, is there room to expand preschool, or we're at capacity?
We're at capacity, I would love to have Barbara. I'm happy with the playground though, thank you. How about a trailer?
Yeah, I think the big hurdle for expanding preschool is, if you built the extra classrooms, there's a lot of lip service from Jefferson City about how important early childhood is, but there's really not dollars following it. So they don't fund preschool teachers at the same rate that they fund that kindergarten teacher. So you could build a space, if you could find qualified applicants and hire them, it would be money out of the budget that could go to other salaries. And so it could be a worthwhile thing, it'd absolutely be good for our community to expand preschool. I'm hopeful that Jefferson City would start funding preschool the way they fund, you know, K-12, but until that day comes, it's kind of a waste of prioritization, so. But that's not the, you know, that's like the pie in the sky, what we ultimately want for our community, and that's not what we're at talking about now, is just how can we better support our teachers with small kids.
I think it's a great idea if you can find a solution that would mix the in-between.
And it would take, I think the byproduct of that is it would take kids, like if you just got the teachers' kids out of daycares or in-home daycare, that opens up slots. Because I think every daycare and every in-home childcare provider is at capacity, that's maybe the biggest challenge in Mexico right now is childcare for small kids.
I've had a couple of teachers reach out to me personally and say that they would like to see this come to fruition.
Yeah.
If we move forward with this, when are we looking to potentially start that program?
Yeah, I think it all depends on what kind of solution we could put, I mean, I think we'd want to announce it pretty quick, because there's that trickle-down, people would need to, if you're a community member and you don't get into preschool, you can start making arrangements, so.
Didn't they used to have a preschool at heart at the VOTET, I mean, I don't know if that's maybe something that we could look into.
Yeah, next question.
Yeah, they're used to, a long time ago.
Built out other programs there, I don't know if there's any room.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, the questions about having early, or having small children there are, there's not, there's not a good restroom situation where you don't have, you know, three-year-olds in the same restroom with high school kids. Some of them aren't, I mean, they're all good kids, some of them aren't, aren't kids from other communities coming in, so.
There's a lot of people around there.
Yeah, maybe we could get them into that career in technical education earlier. I don't know, four-years-old is, that's not too young to start learning how to turn around, so.
This is something we could send out before the end of the school year, just to see, like, how many would have a three-year-old, how many would have a four-year-old?
Just through our staff?
Yeah, just through the staff, I mean.
So we just have a better idea of what.
On what we're looking at, I don't think, I mean, it's not going to be a hundred kids.
Right.
But I understand that if it's, you know, twenty-five kids or something like that, and there might be a kid that, you know, may not be able to get in because you've got a teacher's kid, but to me, that's a perk of being a teacher in the district. I think it'd be a nice perk for them, so.
I don't think it'd be too difficult to try to develop a survey and share those results.
I mean, I could pull my pre-K out, you can watch him all day and we'd be, that'd be one spot for him.
Tell him, yeah.
You can take Nazaraya with you.
I'm going to check my calendar and I'm going to let you know.
I'm looking forward to it, I'm waiting on that snow date.
You feel salty about that?
You better believe it.
Thanks, Lynette.
You're welcome.
If I write a little table on this discussion until you get a warrant.
You think we can get a survey going, I'm sorry, Marcy.
I see you looking at me. We're going to figure it out, we are, we always do.
I mean, at least we can have a number just to see, you know, what we can, how many is out there.
Can we get a number of how many aren't getting in currently of the three-year or four-year-olds?
Yeah, there's a waitlist for the A.
I, my other thing with the survey is that's going to vary so much per year, especially if we're trying to recruit new teachers out of college.
Right.
Maybe if they're going to start a family here to stay here, that may, watch what happens.
Sorry, Ms. B. All right, we'll table until you get more information. The next item is facility use request. We have Ms. Julia Lindsay who would like to address the board regarding use of the district facility. Would you like to come up?
Over here? Up here, I don't know where you want me. Hold on, is this? So my name is Julia Lindsay.
I'm sorry, you have five minutes.
Okay. My name is Julia Lindsay, and I'm here just requesting to use Hawthorne Building. I wanted to originally use it this Saturday, but I've kind of had a little time crunch, so now I'm looking for next Saturday, the twenty-eighth, I believe. I'm wanting to host a town hall, I've had a lot reach out to me in the community about hosting the town hall. And I just thought that it would be a great way and a neutral environment to host this town hall so that our community and the patrons that want to come can come and meet our candidates. I haven't had the opportunity to offer this to our other four candidates, because I had just thought about it, and on Wednesday, I called Hawthorne to ask, and they told me it shouldn't be a problem, there's nothing reserved, I'll call you back. Later that day, I called back, the principal would call me back that day, and she was busy, so I'm not complaining, I know, she was very busy. Thursday morning, I went back, because I still hadn't had a response, and I was out and about, so at that time, the principal was at a meeting out here, so Thursday afternoon, I went back. And I spoke to the principal, and she was instructed to tell me that around election time, they don't like to offer these services, as it may show favoritism to a candidate. But I'm not asking for you to endorse me or any other candidate, I just thought it would be a good place, a good neutral, safe place where people would feel welcome in the community to come and meet the candidates, ask questions. The children could access the playground, everybody would feel, you know, like it was more put together instead of just going to the park or whatnot, where, you know, it may not feel as organized or professional. And so I came back, I came out to central office Thursday afternoon and talked to Troy and Julie, and was denied the use of the building. I didn't even know you could reserve the building, I was just informed, and I do remember actually attending a birthday party at a building. But the buildings are reserved for lots of things that aren't to do with school, birthdays, other things like that. And so I'm like, wow, that's a great idea, and so I just started putting things into place to try to get that done. And I was handed a policy that I can't really find anything in there as far as election goes, and you guys told me that day, Mr. Lins, that you hadn't really ever had this question come up before. And so I don't feel like it is favoritism if every candidate has the same opportunity to reserve one of our public buildings, if they wanted to host their own town hall. But I didn't even get the opportunity to invite the other four candidates to attend this meeting, this town hall. I've had a lot of outreach that people want to, I mean, the only thing that we're really learning about candidates is radio interview, the newspaper interview, and then the women's league, which I'm also pushing and putting that date out there. Because I think that it's great that if we get to know our candidates, I think all of our communities should really push to know our candidates. And I just thought that it would produce a neutral environment and have productive conversations, answer questions, and even hear concerns from the kids that have the playgrounds. What shocked me the most, I think out of this, is the complete overwhelming amount of support from the community, reaching out to me saying, yes, do that, do a town hall, let's get to, so we can meet the candidates and the ones that will come if invited. And then whenever I came to talk to you guys, you looked so shocked that I was just asking for this, you know, like, how dare I ask to bring the community together, you know? And I, that's kind of how I felt for it, I felt about it. And we keep talking about how we want to hear the community, but it feels to me that we're completely kind of doing the opposite by shutting down often, you know? Refusing to do this town hall, or let me host this town hall for everybody's benefit, not just my own. And, you know, the public comment was shut down, if I want to email the board, I can't email either one of you, it just goes straight to the president, then it decides where to go.
All right, that's fine.
And so I just, I'm just wondering why there is such a fear of having a town hall and why you don't want to hear what the community has to say.
Thank you.
And I just hope you guys will reconsider.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Lindsay?
Have you reached out to the Y, the Y did it two years, two years ago, three years ago, something like that?
Well, I will, we will have it no matter what, but I just, I just don't understand the conflict here.
What about the Adrian County Courthouse as well, there's a community room.
The basement, somebody said something about that as well, and so I will look into those, but I just thought, it's a school board election, so. I would think that you guys would even come and listen, you know, listen to the candidates, listen to the community. I just think that would be a great, a great environment, I think it could be a very positive environment, and it doesn't have to be.
Are you saying people don't feel comfortable going to the one with the League of the Women's Voters?
No, I just think a lot of people don't even know about it, so I've been pushing that date, no. I'm not saying that at all, I don't really know nothing about it. I've never even heard of it until this year. I've never even heard of it, so I think that a lot of people, especially, you know, my Adrian, don't know about it. So I've been pushing, I've been out in the community.
They put it in paper and it's on the radio, and I know Matt talks about it too, so it's out.
Oh, I know, I know it's out, and I know that it's not at any, I'm not blaming anybody or anything like that, I just, I just know I had never heard of it. I had never heard of the inclusion revolution either, apparently it's been going on for a while, you know what I mean? So, and there's a lot of things that we don't hear, a lot of people don't know.
All right, let's stay on topic.
And so I'm just trying to push, I'm just letting you know that I am pushing the date of the women's league, so everybody does know and things like that, so.
Thank you very much for doing that. We can discuss it and make a decision here tonight.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Lindsay, or we'll go to discussion? No more questions, so thank you.
All right.
Thank you. From the information that I've received, I think we all got a copy of the policies on here. And we've not done a public, we've not rented any of the school spaces for a political campaign in the past that we can find, correct?
Correct, there have been facility use requests that have been denied, I talked to Mr. Shaver at High School, he usually handles most of them. They've been, once he could remember, there was a request to have a concert at MNZ, they didn't feel matched up with the district's mission, vision, and there was a, like a travel ball tournament that somebody wanted to host here, they didn't feel like was appropriate, so. When I got the request, this, like I said, this Lindsay's correct, this is the first one I'd ever, anybody asked about this, and I felt like it, there's potential there for it to be a violation of policy DCV, so, but also the, or policy allows people to to appeal decisions and take it to the board, so I felt like that was the appropriate course of action.
And there is a neutral space where the League of Women Voters will have candidate forum, which is for school board members as well as the city council, that happens every year for every election. And all of the candidates, I think, are aware of that. To me, it seems like a conflict of interest to have a political candidate at one of the schools, that's my personal opinion. And I think if we open it up now, it just opens us up for a lot of other conflicts, I think. And looking at the policies, that's not specifically written in there, but I think it can be implied. Excuse me? You say it's not specifically written in there, but it can be implied. Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of talk about politics of schools lately, and the need to keep it out, and I think no matter what you think of a school board election, it does become political at some point. And regardless of if it's one candidate or multiple candidates in this instance, or moving forward with a different political candidate, I think we probably just need to.
On DCV, it also says reasonable expenditures may be made solely for the purpose of providing patients of the district with objective information regarding ballot measures to inform voters concerning issues that directly affect the district. And that's what people are reaching out to me about, that they want to talk to us, that they want to meet the candidates. When they go to the League of Women's Voters, you write your question down, some are selected, some aren't, you don't just get to ask the candidates questions, that's the point of this town hall.
Thank you for your input, I feel that the schools need to stay neutral, just as the board is neutral with pop politics, I just think it opens a can of worms. We are all here to serve the students, the families, and the teachers, to protect them, and I think bringing politics into this is not what we need. So, I mean, that's my opinion, anybody else have anything to say, does anybody have a motion?
I've seen some town hall meetings that have gotten pretty downright nasty, with people yelling questions and that are not very structured. And that's not something that I think that, you know, I don't, is there going to be security hired there for the event to maintain that?
Yes.
What, what security will be hired, is there an insurance policy that, you know, in case somebody gets hurt at this rally, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but.
There has to be liability insurance, I mean, the school would have to have it, and then the organization that rents it, there could be a fee involved in that as well. It's not just as simple as opening it up and saying, you know, open the doors and come in. We'd have to hire. Our staff would have to be hired to come in that day. So there's fees that we incur as well.
Some of the policy is full.
Right.
Do I have a motion so we can make a decision on this? Do you want to table it?
I'll make a motion that we do not allow um use of district facilities for um political forums.
At the town hall?
Town hall for political forums, however I want to say it.
Is there a second? Out second. All in favor?
All in both.
That's understood. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Are you abstaining or are you a no?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. The motion carries five zero two. Alright, now we're on to your budget. Would you like to talk about the health benefits?
Yeah, we went over this a little bit last month, but this is where we take board action on it. Six percent um. Increase, um our consortium, I don't, probably. Don't want to drag the meeting out too much longer, but I think there's probably reason to talk about our consortium, particularly with some of the. Conversations going on right now between Anthem and MU Healthcare. Um we're in a consortium with twelve, twelve school districts. You know, the, to use insurance representatives language, not particularly mine, but you get twelve. Twelve districts together, you add more belly buttons, you have more purchasing power. And um we are the biggest district out of everybody in there. I'd say maybe Halswell is is the second biggest district in there. The this, the consortium holds two million dollars. Uh as a fund balance, which earns interest and then so the. The consortium issues checks back to the districts to help us with. With the expense of the rise in health insurance costs for employees. So if you calculate in that, I would call it a rebate. And then it's more like a four percent increase for what we cover for the employees that doesn't make a four percent increase. If you have your kids on the health insurance plan, that's still six percent, but. Six percent is a, is a pretty good rate increase in this market, because health insurance is. Best way to say it if I'm on YouTube is unstable right now. Rates are, seem like they go up. But if you leave the consortium and try to go shop around independently, you forfeit your share of. Of the two million dollar pot, that's in the bylaws of the consortium. So out of the two million dollars. About five hundred thousand of it is Mexico fifty nine, so it'd be difficult to. Walk away from it, try to shop independently. And I don't know that we would do much better, to be honest, because there's not. Seems like we try to. Yeah, it's difficult to talk about the health insurance uh market. There's not a lot of competition out there, and so what would you find?
What locally, have you had anybody approach you locally on insurance?
Um no, like a local broker, no. I've worked with a local broker before, but I think there's just. They're few and far between anymore. I think um. You know, every insurance outfit. Kind of controls how many people can sell in that area, and so it's a. It's an interesting market with health insurance, but Anthem and Mizzou Health, in MU Healthcare are at odds right now. It would be out of network. Uh I don't know that there's a, there's only bad options, I feel like, but I do feel like. I feel like it's a whole lot of things and I'm asking you to prove this for me. But I I say that I think uh it'd be, it'd be impossible to move forward and get a quote before that could go into effect. July first at this time. But our relationship with our co-op kind of locks us in, because I think that it can end in a. Conversation that we could have over the course of, you know, between now and the next renewal, so. I acknowledge that this renewal is imperfect, especially with with Anthem and MU Healthcare, since they're one of our bigger providers, but. You know, over time, if the hospital does what they say they're going to do here, then people would have a good in-network provider. And maybe at the eleventh hour, Anthem and MU Healthcare will work something out, so I think there's. Finger pointing between both parties, so. But our current budget models right now are based off a six percent increase for. The second highest premium, which is an HSA, and that would be my recommendation that we. Lock in for our employees and lock into our budget for next year, so.
This is based off of the in-network or the out-of-network?
Uh it's just, so it's the rate that we'll pay for our premium doesn't matter what they are, but the amount of coverage they get varies. Um and that's just a decision that people have to make for health, healthcare. You know, is this, am I getting my healthcare in a place that's in-network or out-of-network? And then they should probably. Check to make sure that they know how much that'll cost them when they're. It's not covered.
So I'm sure it probably hasn't been, but has this been communicated, since it's the same insurance program currently? Has this been communicated, the struggle back and forth, I know it's all over the news.
Yeah, I feel like.
From within.
Yeah, we we send notices out through our newsletter and we're also sending here, and then also Anthem has contacted its. All of its, anybody that's used MU in the last several years, they've sent a letter to me as well. And just to clarify, it's a six point seven percent increase.
Yeah, thank you. And yeah, both parties are negotiating through the customer, which seems a little.
MU wants their customers to contact Blue Cross Blue Shield, Blue Cross, Blue Shield wants them to call and harass MU.
We're not trying to, you do it.
We're having a lot of times, we schedule a little hour and they'll come up with an agreement. Just like when Dish Network drops your ESPN and then all of a sudden it's still there, so we're still hoping for that.
It's not wrong, it's a great analogy.
Give them two or three days. Well, that's the only, that's the only healthcare that's state offering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
So it's Anthem, yeah. So, I mean, I'm surprised that MU's having such, because they're partially state funded, so I'm kind of like, what's going on with this?
It's about money.
I know, it's.
It's not really about.
Alright, any other questions? Amber, anything else you need to?
I think you pretty much summed it up.
But I think we still continue to do a hundred percent that we've done the last several years.
Yeah, and that amount that's listed there would be the same, we have to be paid for.
Motion?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the health benefits as presented at a rate of seven oh nine point two three per month per employee that qualifies for health insurance. For the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, this whole year.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of the twenty five, twenty six certified salary schedule?
Yeah, and this is what we've been talking about, I think, since January, and you know, the challenge that we have are. Is to spend down our reserves in a way that we can level it out when the time comes. Uh the district has been. Pretty aggressive in in increasing the starting salary, doing a thousand dollar raises over the last few years. That's made to where our, our teaching salaries are. Fairly competitive with with even Columbia, uh for sure within our conference. Um so this is a, this is not a thousand dollar increase, it's a seven hundred dollar increase. Like to remind everybody that if you're trying to calculate the salary increase as a percent, I don't think it would be accurate to use seven hundred dollars as the numerator. I think you would want to add the five hundred and fifty dollar step, so it's a twelve hundred and fifty dollar increase. And that doesn't include if somebody moves laterally with with education, so. By state statute, we're required to have a salary schedule that that applies uniformly to. Every uh teacher, so that means, you know, you end up with steps down and lanes across, and I think every district tries to build a. Better mousetrap and we for sure want to, but the end result of doing salary schedules, the way we do it and the way everybody else does it, is if. If you try to calculate the salary increase on somebody that's in, like the upper, let's say the upper right-hand corner. It's going to be a, a greater percentage than someone that has many more years of service, so you can find. Find places in the salary schedule where someone might go, get a four and a half percent or five percent raise from. Year A to year B if they move down and they move over. And they're at the beginning of their career, and the the challenge is for people that are. Been with the district for a long time. I suppose if you're. On year thirty and we don't have a step thirty one, which is something we could consider if we had. Lots of folks that were were here in thirty and going to thirty one, you could look at that. Those those folks don't get that step increase, but. Uh I feel like, talked through this with CPA, had a pretty good meeting with them. I don't think they want to see the district in a, in a place where we're. You know, locked into deficit spending in ways that are difficult to manage, so. Like I say, you could find a range probably between four and a half percent to to two percent, depending on where you wanted to pick cells. Uh if you're not on the salary schedule, my recommendation is to to do a three percent increase, so. But the first, first part would be the. The salary schedule, so if we, if that's approved tonight, then again, our budget for twenty five, twenty six. For expenditures gets. That that cement starts to firm up pretty quick.
So what it'll look like, I know if you. If you do a a percentage raise or a base raise, whatever it is, you have to be able to accommodate that for the foreseeable future.
Right.
Every year adds and adds and adds, so would it, what would it look like if you did a certain more percentage this year? And then next year went back to the average and it hasn't been?
Right. Yeah, that would be the hope that we would, um, you know, the state is looking at the foundation formula. I think they'll actually. Look at it, hopefully that that means it'll do something that's better for us, not worse for us, so if we found out that uh the. The state was going to fund K twelve education at a rate that's better than what the trend has been. If we find out that, you know, uh new construction or. You know, there's a lot of reasons to be optimistic about our local economy with with the chumps coming in, the potential for a hospital, so. You know, the, our our local revenue really drives a lot of our budgets, so if that were to be on a positive trend. Say something that has to be addressed there is is the tax credits that that are put in that I think are. You know, for anybody that's older than sixty two, you can understand why we want to have some relief for them, but it does. Kind of levels our revenue, so, you know, if revenue numbers come in and they're. They're better than what we thought, then yeah, I think we get back on, we want to. Get back to doing healthy additions to the base, so. Trying to work down from about a, almost a near fifty percent uh fund balance to try to get between twenty and thirty. In short order without ending up at a seven percent fund balance is a, it's a little bit of needle to thread, so.
That's why I don't know if you, if you up that for one year.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think um. You know, I want to add money to the base, I want, want to be proud of what we start our teachers out.
Any other questions about the salary schedule? Do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty six certified salary schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six certified staff salary schedule as presented.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six administrator salary and contracts, anything on that?
No, I just uh would restate that. If folks are not on the salary schedule, like the administrators, program directors, and then when we do our. Non-certificated employees, my recommendation will be three percent for them, because we don't have a. A salary schedule in the same way that we have teachers, so I I acknowledge that the salary schedule is uneven, depending on. On how much time you have in and uh the, you know, the. Most creative way I can do it is try to split the difference and try to be as consistent as I can with people that are on, are not on the salary schedule.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, I think that's supposed to be say twenty twenty six administrator salaries contracts.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Onto personnel, approval of personnel is listed, any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel that is listed.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries six zero one. Approval of the twenty five, twenty six new probationary teaching contracts, any questions? Comment? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six probationary teaching contracts for. Uh V Devaney and Dee Christman.
There looks like there's another one on your drainer.
What about Miss Drainer?
Well, yeah, I'm Miss Drainer too.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Oh, sorry. Approval of extra duty contracts, any questions? Motive, uh motive, motion?
Make a motion for the extra duty contracts. Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
If you have a question now.
Okay, question?
So when we do the extra duty contracts. They get so much put back for those accounts towards retirement as well. Now do we pay that or do they pay that?
It works like uh everything else. There's a fourteen and a half percent that gets taken out that they pay, and there's fourteen and a half that we match.
Right, but who's paying? Because these extra groups that we're doing, aren't they funded through C two C?
Oh, so, oh, good question about those, yeah. So we do have some extra duty contracts.
Oh, shoot.
Um so the way that we have those agreements, um, and I, this is an opportunity to highlight. Some of the, the contributions that that C two C PRI is making to our community, um because they are funding some of these, but we don't. We're not billing them at just the flat rate for the, for the stipend. We are adding on sixteen percent. To capture the district match for the retirement and to capture the Medicaid match, so it's, we're a. We we are, we're wanting to. I mean, something that you're pretty familiar with, the the salary is not the total cost of employment, the total cost of employment is.
Right, I was just wondering, I wasn't even worried about it, I was just asking, because I just saw that, I didn't page that.
We uh, with with our proposals with them, we've written in, this is the price of the stipend, and then we want sixteen percent additional to cover what we're covering for the insurance, or for the. Not the insurance for the retirement and the Medicaid match, and the uh. PRI, the folks at PRI, C two C have been very understanding of that. And and we're providing, there's more opportunities for kids than there was because of this work, so I shouldn't, should have jumped on that earlier.
Well, I skipped it, so.
Uh all in favor, please raise your hand. Watch out, you too. Motion carries seven zero.
Such a replay.
Already the probationary, right?
We did, okay.
I am professional now, right? Uh approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty six new professional teaching contracts, any questions?
Just a question, that's twenty four, twenty five, not twenty five, twenty six.
Twenty four, twenty five, okay. Motion to approve twenty four, twenty five professional teaching contracts.
So I'll make a motion.
Motion. Motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that it's supposed to be twenty-four, twenty-five professional teaching contract. Oh, you're correct, for, um, K E R.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Rehire certified staff eligible for tenure, any questions? Any comments, Troy, or? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to rehire certified staff eligible for tenure for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Rehire probationary staff for twenty-five, twenty-six, any questions? Comments?
I make a motion to rehire probationary certified staff for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Rehire of professional staff for twenty-five, twenty-six, any questions? Comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to rehire professional certified staff for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Do I have a motion for adjournment to executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session by a closed vote and a closed record pursuant to R S N of six one zero dot zero two one, section thirteen.